Welcome everyone, we now come to order for March 25th, 2025 city council meeting. Norm will you please call Roe?
Yes, sir. Mayor Hendrick.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Stoker.
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Vasquez.
Here.
Councilmember Cornell.
Present.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Is Pastor Steve Moss from the First Methodist Church present? Could you please come forward to this on our invitation? If you'll please stand if you're able.
Let us bow as we pray. Oh good and gracious and holy God, Lord, we thank you for the gift of this day. Lord, we also thank you for this city, for its leaders, and for those who support it throughout each and every day. We pray especially, Lord, for this evening. We pray for wisdom to descend upon all who speak and deliberate and make decisions. And we pray all that those decisions that are made would benefit the citizens of this city and bring honor and glory to your holy name. We ask these things all in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Reverend, we appreciate it. Uh, Councilman Haney, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. May be seated. Alright, no proclamations for tonight. Is there any assistant comments on non-agenda items?
No, sir.
Alright. Let's move to our consent agenda. Does anyone have an opportunity to look at the council minutes from last meeting as well as the issues? Do not entertain a motion.
I so move, we approve.
Motion by Councilman Vasquez.
Second.
Second by Councilman Cornell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now move on to agenda item number five. Consider awarding a fleet car washes to Mighty Wash, Mr. Rubrikis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present the recommendation for the award of the car wash services bid. The city issued a proposal on behalf of the Ector County Governmental Purchasing Group to secure car wash services for our fleet vehicles. A total of three bids were received, and after a committee review, Mighty Wash has been determined to be the most responsive bidder. At this time, I respectfully request council's approval to award the contract to Mighty Wash Services for car wash service.
Thank you. Councilman, any questions?
You'll hate this, but did we get a group discount?
Um, I would think so, yes.
A little bit?
I think so.
Can I get my number now?
No car washing from council. Either comment, answer questions? Do not entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Haney. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second it. No one else wants to speak up?
Second by Councilman Vasquez. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Alright. Item number six. Consider authorizing the interim city manager to execute an extension to maintain maintenance and support agreement number 894 in purchase order with Motorola Solutions, an amount of $78,369 for maintenance support services for the Premier One Computer Aided Dispatch Mobile Record Management System. Okay.
Um, just a brief history, because some of you were not here last year when we approved this. We've been looking for a new CAD system, computer aided dispatch. That's what we utilize in communications to input the calls and to dispatch the fire department and the police department out to calls. And we have had our current CAD since March of 2014. And one of their things was customer service to us was not always great. And there was a lot of times our system was down, so that's why we started looking. Um, we did get some ARP funds last year in the amount of $1,422,410. By the time it was to sign for this new CAD, the price had increased by $166,809. So we, our IT department had budgeted $370,000 for the year for CAD. And so we used that, $166,000 of that to make the full contract. So we got that paid for, and we're waiting for our new CAD system to go live. The delay in getting that inputted was, of course, they have to build it to our specifications. And also our network was down for a while, so that delayed it. And so our current contract with Motorola is ending April 1st. And we want a three-month extension for tech support, so we'll have and we own the equipment, but we wouldn't need the tech support throughout until we can go live with our new CAD system.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
So $78,000 is just for the
The three months, tech support, yes.
What happens after that?
We will have our new CAD system live, yes, hopefully.
Move approval? There's a motion by Councilman Tom, do you approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Mitchell, I hear. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
And we should have the contract to you, Mr. Morton, tomorrow.
Fantastic, thank you. Agenda item number seven is consider approving the purchase of a citing crash software license for the police department for $311,238. Davidson, how are you, sir?
Mayor, council members. Uh, City and Crash is a crash reduction through analysts of safety hazards. What it does it, every crash report that Odessa Police Department makes, it goes through the state database. And it's really hard to pull information out. It doesn't even identify Odessa versus Ector County. So a lot of the information is misconstrued. But what this does, it takes all the data by the longitude and latitude. It maps it out. It reads the officer's narrative through an AI algorithm and gives us real-time solutions to our crash problems in Odessa, which I'm sure we can all agree is extensive. This actually helps police and traffic engineering out. You know, our roadways are wide. People go faster on wider roadways, so it helps us find traffic calming solutions for engineering. Joe Goff, who refused to get up here and talk with me. We can actually highlight areas. And you could say, I've got $35,000 to make a difference in this area. And City and Crash will give you actual solutions that are within budget. And you can add, subtract the different solutions. They're all real-time, price updated. This is part of the zero vision process of eliminating fatality crashes. We have to understand what our problem is in the city of Odessa. We're only getting bigger, more vehicles on the roadway. So this is kind of our opportunity, the 300, was it 1,000? 311? That's a five-year contract. So what they're gonna do, they're gonna go back and collect three years' worth of data for us to start working on the ground floor.
Nice.
Is this in your budget?
This is in our budget.
Okay.
Mike, guys, any questions?
So I think it kind of ties together with the next one, but talking about traffic calming and those kinds of things, that's something that, you know, it just, whatever we can do to help you guys that
And currently, this is in San Antonio and Corpus Christi. It will be the third city to sign on in Texas.
And I, again, I may be on the next one, but you know, looking at all the streets and is that
Every reported crash will be in this one, the next one
I think it's the next, again, I'm
The next one's interesting too.
Yes.
I think recording those accurately is really important to you, but the proactive nature to it is icing on the cake.
You know, when we looked at the data this year, it's kind of a shotgun effect all over the city. This gives us a better understanding of not just when and where, but why and how.
Right, right.
Gentlemen, no further questions, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Alright, I give to Councilman Cornell, second by Councilman Haney. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Takes us to the next agenda item, which is the
Urban SDK.
Urban SDK, yes, sir. Tell us about that.
This is a three-year contract. It's the same price each year. What I didn't see on the previous one, there's a 3% up cost each year for the usage. This one actually takes data from connected vehicles, GPS units. It does not collect personal identifying information, just speeds. But it collects it from every roadway within our jurisdiction. So this helps us map out citizen complaints. They say speeding's going on in their neighborhood. I can look at real-time data at the moment and tell them what the speed issue is on their roadway. Dates, times, what's going on. It helps us understand the flow of traffic. As we grow, uh, traffic backs up. We can understand patterns of why they're backing up. This is another one that tags along with Mr. Goff. Hi, Joe. But I mean, it works for where we're headed as a city. We're growing. We have so many cars on the roadway, it gives us a better understanding of what our hot zones, what our true issues are.
So it gives you the GPS off of, say, my truck, but it doesn't give you the information of who's driving?
Yes, I don't know that Councilmember Haney's speeding, I just get your speed.
I'm busted, man. I, every now and then I look down and I am going a little faster than what I should be.
And we see that in Odessa, some roads, even though there's a posted speed limit, they're so wide and most of us drive up to our comfortability that we feel like we need to go faster.
Well, there's some of them that got 75, and then, then there's a 70-minute hour sign, and then there's a 65.
Yes, sir.
You don't know which one you're supposed to be riding, so
The most recent one.
Yeah. The slower one, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
That's what you're gonna tell me? If, if it's giving you real information on real drivers, then I have a problem with that, because yeah, now you're infringing on my privacy.
But I don't get your information.
And that's why I was asking, I want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
Nothing else?
Nothing else, just your speed.
Just my speed.
So one of the big pushes I want to make, and I know we've talked about the timing of the lights and you know, how to get, it's 2025, surely there's a better way than standing out there with a stopwatch and
I'm getting to the right slide in the
Yeah, but uh, it, it just seems there's that, you know, coming on down 42nd. It, alright, the, the big event at the Coliseum just let out, let's flush everything down there real quick, and then the lights can go back to something. We talked about it with, um, the, the, the system we talked about was tied into the actual lights, but seems like the goal would be to get everybody connected, so that, you know, hey, this system ties into that. It says, alright, here's your real-time data on what the traffic's actually doing. You know, does this have the ability to tie into what they want?
I don't know that they'll speak to each other, but Joe's team will be able to look at the distance and the time it takes to get through light cycles. Like, he can do an average time, and he can draw out whatever map he wants to get through lights. And he can get an average time it takes to drive from one side of Odessa to the other. I mean, it's, it's all intuitive. I mean, you can break it down, like, in the future, this will help us with traffic delays. It'll help first responders decide quicker pathways. You know, if we get larger and then we get hot calls from south to north, and we need to know the quicker routes to get there, we can study this and find, you know, advise patrol and fire EMS. These are the routes we need to start taking. I mean, this is just the beginning step of where Odessa, as a city, we need to understand that the size that we're getting to and the amount of vehicles that come in here, because you know, we have amazing crime analysts that can look at crime data and break it apart, but crash and speed and traffic is a different beast.
Yeah.
And that this is our ability, which it's budgeted as well, to try to understand that and see if we can put the right people in the right places to affect traffic in the city of Odessa.
Matt, you may have said, but what, what device is actually reading this information? It's attached to the signals or how do I see that?
How you see?
What device is reading this information?
Well, it's third-party proprietary data that they pull from like OnStar connected vehicles. They estimate 43% of vehicles are connected now and expecting up to 98% by 2028.
I drive a Dodge, so my mom will be tired.
You're invisible.
I'm invisible.
No.
But that was one of the, and I thank you for bringing that up. That was something that we talked about with OFR that, you know, right now the lights don't turn green when they are on a call going somewhere. And that's something we could do to help them respond to their calls faster. So all of this data we can do to help you guys get to where you need to be faster is better.
I think, sir. Any more questions, gentlemen? Do not entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Stoker, second by Councilman Tom. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Hey, I'm the rookie here, what's that ranking on your shirt?
I'm sorry?
What's your ranking?
Deputy Chief, sir.
Deputy Chief, okay. Well, I'm Army, I'm, it's totally different.
I'm sorry.
Alright, Army, sit down. Agenda item nine is consider an approved additional work at the water treatment plant and rehabilitation and miscellaneous upgrades. Alex, for a couple of issues.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Council. The Utilities Department is asking your consideration and approval for additional work to the water treatment plant rehab. We are currently in the process of adding our second portion of the hydraulic relief line to Clear Wells 2 and 3. We have run into another issue where we cannot isolate the Clear Wells. So we have come up with a plan to still install this T in between Clear Wells 2 and 3. And also put a bypass in to keep these two Clear Wells simultaneously going, so we don't have to keep the city on two Clear Wells. By our TC EQ requirements, we can only have two Clear Wells running, uh, or we have to keep at least two Clear Wells running and no longer than a period of eight hours. So with this bypass, with this line stop, we're able to stop and enter in our hydraulic relief line T that we're putting in. And then also, we're gonna keep the bypass going to keep all three Clear Wells in service. So we're asking for the contractor to be able to do this work. We already have the money moved over from the contingency fund into the PO. We currently have $626,782 remaining in that PO from the contingency account, which will cover the cost for this, and that will leave us with $56,259 remaining in the PO. For the entirety of the contingency fund, um, that would be, remaining would be $3,704,000. So we still have 3.7 million left in the contingency fund for any other issues that we run into.
Alex has had a question on that. On the cost in the document, it's $544,000, but on the front sheet, it shows $54,000. Is that just a misprint?
I believe that that's a misprint, yes.
It should be $544,127.
That's unnatural.
I think one was dropped.
Yes, the one should be dropped, or yes, it should be added there, I'm sorry.
Gotcha, thank you, I was trying to clarify that.
So we still have, we still have money in the contingency fund, but this is vital to our project. This is going to take us from 40 million demand a day to 55. So we have to get this done to move the project forward. As of right now, we're not able to replace the valves because of the timeline of the project. Those valves are at least anywhere from 20 to 30 weeks out. So that would delay us by the project. So we're gonna have to look at probably going in at a later date to replace those valves across those two Clear Wells. But they are open, so they do still function. It's just closing them, isolating them, that's the issue.
So the new valves are that far out?
Yes, sir.
Did you not know you're gonna have to replace them?
So these were not in the scope of the project, no, sir. So when they started the project, um, that was before my time. They did work, and then, um, over time, they haven't worked or there were issues. I'm not sure, I wasn't here whenever the project started to see if they actually worked or not. But it was under the knowledge that they did work. Now they currently do not.
Nice surprise. So what's the timeline on getting all the, except for those valves? When, when is the rest of the project gonna be finished?
So currently, the expected completion date from the contractor to the city in their CPM that they give us is September 23rd. That's when they are telling us that it's gonna be complete.
Okay.
That is, that's everything. That is offsites, that's, um, the Darrington, because there is some stuff at the Darrington that's incorporated in this. Their CPM says September 23rd. That's when they plan on being done.
Alright, so are they gonna put the valves in, or are we gonna put them in?
We're, we're not putting any valves in for this project.
I thought the valves are, I thought you ordered new valves.
No, sir, not for this. We have not, we have not ordered valves.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
We're, we're just implementing a bypass, a lot, two line stops and then a bypass to put in the hydraulic relief line. We're gonna have to, after the project, go in and replace those valves.
What's that, so you haven't even ordered those yet?
No, sir. No, sir.
But I'm just saying, whenever those get
Yes, we'll do them with our 9.5 million that we, we have the valve continuous, uh, the valve project at, after that, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Do not entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Haney, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Stay there, Alex.
Thank you, sir.
Item number 10 is consider the purchase of Venturi for water treatment plant.
Yes, sir. This, what we are considering and asking for approval for is a purchase of a Venturi and valve setup. This was not included in the water treatment plant rehab. We're asking for a replacement Venturi valve for the main backwash line for our filters. So this is our only line that, and valve, that let us backwash the new filters. This backwash valve is from 1986, and it is showing signs of wear and tear. It's just time to replace. The valve currently does work. We have it in our budget. This is just precautionary. If it does fail, then we are not able to backwash any of our filters, so
So when this project is done, you got all these extra valves. Can we send these valves off and see if they can be rebuilt? Is this something that, that we would consider, or yes or no?
Most of the time, no, sir. Unless the valve is properly working, we don't normally rebuild valves, we put in brand-new valves.
Not talking about us, but there are companies that rebuild these big valves and stuff, so I don't know if it's something that you would consider doing to have it as a backup for future?
Yes, sir. It would be something to consider, absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do not entertain a motion.
So moved.
That's by Councilman Tom, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Haney?
Yep.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, Council.
Alright. Item number 11. Consider take appropriate action regarding the purchase of four side loader trucks for solid waste, Aaron Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sir? Oh, good evening.
I said, good evening.
Back at you. Yes, sir, thank you. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the purchase of four side loader trucks for the solid waste department for $1,361,286.92. This item would allow for us to replace four side loader trucks, one of a, three of them are 2016s, and one is a 2017.
I assume they've aged out?
Yes, sir, these are, have come to the end of their really useful life. In fact, one of these units is currently needing a repair of about $90,000.
Did I read into this that we need these vehicles, but they were not previously approved or budgeted for?
That's correct. They're outside of the adopted budget, the current adopted budget, so yes. So we're basically asking you to, uh, purchase these and appropriate the funds from the Equipment Services Fund balance at the same time.
That would be my recommendation, that the council authorized that $1,361,286.92 be used from Equipment Services Fund balance for the purchase of four side loader, side, uh, side loader solid waste trucks.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
Where's that money coming from?
The Equipment Services Fund balance.
Aaron, the bids haven't been put out on it as of yet. We're waiting for council approval.
Uh, we have, uh, we have some bids actually, um, from, and they're on a TIPS contract, so if this is approved, we can move forward with those.
And the expected vendor would be for the delivery time, how far out are they?
Uh, the vendor is Vanguard, and we could receive those in very short order.
Super, super.
These trucks happen to already be at the, the can dealership? So the chassis is purchased, and then it gets shipped to the, the can dealership, where they put the can in the back on it, and then once that's done, it ships to us. So these four are already at that dealership.
So our, our, our purpose tonight is to authorize to go ahead and purchase these, because we need them, even though they were not budgeted for previously and all that other stuff.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, if there's no more of the questions, I so move, that we approve.
Motion by Councilman Vasquez, is there a second?
Second.
One second.
Four seconds, I give to Councilman Stoker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Alex.
Alright. Item agenda 12. Open a public hearing to consider approval of the request of John Barnett Construction LLC for a zone change from SF-2 Single Family Residence District 2 to PD-SF Planned Development Single District Family on a 12.95 acre tract of land located in Section 16, Block 41, Ector County, Texas. Liz?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the applicant is requesting a zone change from SF Single Family Residential District 2 to SF Planned Development District in order to be able to do some housing in, in here. The applicant is gonna be doing 32 new home, sorry, 34 new residential homes. They're gonna range about 8,400 square feet to 15,886 square feet. So they're custom homes in this area. Here's an exhibit to it. Staff is recommending approval of this zone change of a SF 2 to an SFPD. I will like to make an amendment, though, right here, we are saying that we're requesting the zone change to a PD. Because it's a Planned Development District, I have to adopt exhibit, which would go back to this one. So I'd like to add B, which would be to add, child conform to exhibit A, we can say.
Okay. We're now open a public hearing. Public hearing is open now, and we're wishing, anyone wishing to speak can do so on the item. Please limit your discussion to three minutes. Go ahead. Anyone? John Langrath, President, if we have questions? Let's continue, if you have a fifth, any other
Did we not do this once before, or?
No, it's a different location.
Same general location, though. Yeah, okay.
We have a lot of housing companies.
I get it, I get it.
Alright, if no one has any questions, we'll close the public hearing. Council, any questions? Do not entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Thompson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by all six other Councilman Cornell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item 13, open a public hearing to consider approval of the request by G3 Investments LLC for a zone change from FD Future Development District to LI Light Industrial District on an 8.32 acre tract of land being part of the Cardinal Chemical E edition recording volume 11, page 56 of Flat Records of Ector County, Texas.
Thank you again. So the applicant is requesting a zone change to Light Industrial. So this actually has been inside city limits for quite a bit. It's already been working, uh, they've, they're connected to a spur. And they've had a chemical building in here as well. So how this property came is that, um, one of our new laws is that people can try to deannex in, from the city. So in order for us to be able to keep them in, we are, you know, trying to work with them, and everything around the surrounding area still follows, like, again, this has already been there. Um, and so therefore, we are requesting to support the zone change from Future Development to giving it a zoning, which be Light Industrial. Not open for any questions.
Let's open up public hearing. Public hearing will be open now, anyone wishing to speak on this item can do so. We'll issue, limit your discussion to three minutes each. Is there anyone? No? Alright, we'll close public hearing. Council, any questions?
G3 Investments, are they local or, or mail-serv?
So from what I know is that they're just, I guess it just got bought, and so it's a new company, so I don't know if
So we have several
Sir, would you mind coming to the public, introducing yourselves, we have a record of it?
Thank you very Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we, we've had several pieces of property around this facility. We have a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet at the corner of Murphy and Industrial, as well as the property across these tracks from it currently. So we are out of Houston, but we've been here for twenty-five years. So headquarters is Houston, but we have offices in probably maybe twenty-five to thirty employees here. And this basically would improve, would probably bring another ten to twelve employees into employment.
Well, we thank you for your longevity and your.
Introduce yourself for the records.
Oh, yes, sorry. David Gaither, I'm the President of Kim Jet International and the owner of G three Investments.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, do you have any questions?
So Liz, this, okay. I'm just making sure public understands. You don't want to talk to me tonight, do you? So, so then in doing this, I mean, that it's moved from property taxes inside the city limit to?
So they've been inside city limits. It's just that it never got the proper zoning. Remember how I've explained several times? When we annex things in, it, our ordinance used to be as you come in as a feature development, so the zoning was never there. So now we're assigning it so they can grow their company and they can add more to it. That's kind of why we were coming to you guys right now. If they would have no change right now, of course, my preference is always to clean up everything, to give it a zoning. So, but it wouldn't have triggered it to have to come here right now. So they've been there. So it probably had been, like you said, twenty years, twenty-five years?
Yeah.
Been there. So it could have been that in that time that they came, the business was already there.
Okay, so they'll still pay, they'll still pay a fee in little property taxes. That's, that'll be the only change as far as we're concerned?
Yes.
In the zoning?
Yes, it's the zoning.
Okay.
They've already been inside city limits.
Yeah.
There's my mind. All right, gentlemen, any other questions? Not entertain a motion? Motion by Councilman Haney, second. By Councilman Vasquez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Liz.
Liz, will you come back up there for a minute, please?
Agenda item fourteen, consider approval of performance agreement buying between the Odessa Development Corporation and Premier Building Supply. Tracy, you don't look like David Bhutan.
Is that Bhutan, though?
Not David Bhutan. He is unable to be here tonight, so he asked us if we could, actually Tina said, hey, would you please come and do this? Sure. Okay, so.
Introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Tracy Jones, I'm the Director of Business Retention and Expansion for the Odessa Chamber of Commerce and the Odessa Development Corporation. At the last Odessa Development Corporation Board meeting, the Compliance Committee had met and were making recommendations for Premier, Premier Building Supply. I can't talk tonight. They are a commercial construction supply business that are going to start fabricating cold, cold rolled steel building components. And they will distribute them locally here out of a warehouse on Stevens Road. They are going to invest two million dollars on equipment and improvements to their facility. And this will create seventeen full-time equivalent new jobs with a minimum annual payroll of nine hundred and five thousand dollars per year. The grant that the, that they qualify for was two hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. And it will be paid out over a five-year period equal payments if they are in compliance with their performance agreement.
All right, anybody have any questions?
The two seventy-five covers their needs.
I'm sorry.
The two seventy-five covers their needs.
Any other questions? All right, entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Councilman Haney, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Canal, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Go agenda item number fifteen, consider approval of performance agreement buying between the Odessa Development Corporation and Delaware Buildings LLC. Again, Mr. Bhutan or Tracy?
Okay, and this one is a facade grant improvement for downtown Odessa. We have just recently started taking care of those out of our office, so this is the first one actually that we have done. So if I get it wrong, I apologize upfront. This is with Delaware Building LLC. They have already on the building on West, West Second, four oh seven West Second. They have already done some renovations to, to the building. What they have come asking for is a facade grant for window, new windows and doors for the building. The estimate on those improvements was sixty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-four cents. And the, of course, facade grant can only be maximum of twenty-five thousand dollars. So that's what the ODC Board has recommended that, that we approve is a twenty-five thousand dollar facade grant for this project.
Thanks, Tracy. Want to have any questions?
Nope. Move to approve.
Motion by Councilman Stoker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Canal? Oh, Trane, excuse me. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Tracy, we appreciate it. All right, agenda item sixteen, consider awarding a bid to R and W Construction, General Contractor, AEC Electric, Electric Contractor, Top One C Construction LLC, Plumbing Contractor, Dr. Freo for HVAC Contractor, Sepley for Rehabilitation of three fifteen McKinney Avenue. An approvals, now are you?
Hi.
Where are you?
Good evening. Yes, I'm here for a recommendation for the awards of our rehab reconstruction. And we have three items today. The first one is three fifteen McKinney. Now, these funds are from Program Year twenty twenty-four. They're CDBG and home funds. These funds were already allocated on June the eleventh by City Council. So this money was already, we went before last year and we received it late this year, but we received it. And so this is the funding we're gonna be using. We did receive during the bid meeting, which we're required to have, we did receive, we, three general contractors did attend the meeting, two HVAC, two electrical and one, one plumbing company. And when we opened the bids, it was only one general contractor that actually submitted his bid, so. But we're very lucky. They're reputable. We had a good committee and so I feel very blessed that we had contractors that actually did put a bid in, so.
All right, thank you. Do you want to have a quick, Councilman Haney?
I just want to make a recommendation on this because this is my next door neighbor. This is a widow lady. And this is what makes me proud to live in Odessa, that we can help, that we haven't given up on our widows and anything else. So I'm, I'm just, I'm excited about this. And so I would like to move to have this pass unless there's any other questions.
Well, before we do, she's got three in a row. Do we need to do these individually?
Separately.
Yes.
So there's a motion by Councilman Haney, a second by Councilman Mitchell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, let's go to item seventeen.
Thank you.
Consider awarding a bid, R and W Construction, General Contractor, AEC Electrical Contractor, Top One C Construction, Plumbing Contractor, Dr. Freo for HVAC, for seven oh three Jeter Avenue.
Yes, yes. This is another one of those properties that they have been on the waiting list for three years approximately. And so we go back to keeping elderly independent, keeping them warm and dry during the winter and cool during the summer. So this is one of those properties as well. Same contractors submitted the bid, so.
All right, gentlemen, any discussion? Not entertain a motion. Motion by Councilman Mitchell, is there a second? Second by Councilman Haney, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Last section, agenda item eighteen, same contractors for property on fifteen, excuse me, five fifteen West Ada Street.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, before you start on this one, Cal, the recipient is an employee of mine. So to avoid any perception, I will abstain from this one.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, councilman.
Move forth.
Yes, so this is another one of those. So I would, when these are completed, y'all will be invited to the open house.
Thank you very much. That's great work. We do appreciate it. Counsel, is there a motion? Councilman Haney has the first and Councilman Vasquez has the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully, the other things that keep working for you this year.
Yeah, six and one abstained. Thank you.
She's got some good things coming up for us.
Fantastic.
Yes, indeed, yes, indeed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, excellent. Item, agenda item nineteen, consider authorizing the City of Odessa Police Department to accept appropriate, appropriate and authorized expenditures from awarded Texas Law Officer Standard Educational. Leo's Funds?
Leo's, yes. Good afternoon, good evening, Mayor, City Council. This is just simply a request to accept and use these, permission to use these funds from the Leo's Funds from the government. I'm sorry, can't talk this afternoon. In the amount of twenty thousand four hundred thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. These funds are specifically marked for, for education and training for law enforcement, certified law enforcement officers. We receive these every year, but generally not in this amount. So the last few years, these have gone up. A few years ago, it was five or six thousand dollars a year. Recent, starting last year, it actually went up into the twenties, so.
This is, this is great.
You want to have any questions for Chief? Not entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilman Thompson, second by Councilman Haney. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Chief. Agenda item twenty, consider adjusting signature cards for operating account at PNC by Kaylee.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
So a few weeks ago, we brought you a resolution to update the signers on our checks. This is different, so the resolution you already saw dictates who in the city can sign for dual control purposes on checks over ten thousand. This will be the actual signature cards at the bank who can make decisions regarding the accounts, open accounts, close accounts, do those kinds of things. So we'll be adding myself, our CFO, Kayla Hedges, and Mr. Smith. Any questions?
Did you say, Aaron?
Yes.
Is Matthew McGee still on the signature card?
Yes, him as well, thank you. He's our controller, so yes.
Thank you. Any questions? Not entertain a motion.
So move.
Councilman Vasquez, are, are motions, are second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Thompson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next to page. Agenda item twenty-one, A F for City Commission and Board Members. Is there any need to bring up tonight?
Yes, counsel, for the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, Chris Hines is willing to, to serve again if counsel wishes to reappoint. And Mayor, for the Zoning Board of Adjustment, your appointee, Anthony Reals, is willing to serve if you wish to reappoint him.
And you should have an application from Suzie.
Yes, that came in yesterday, so I will forward that to the council for the, for the April council meetings consideration.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, let's just do the animal shelter tonight. You want to have a motion?
I move that we approve Chris Hines.
Second.
And a second by, a motion by Councilman Vasquez, a second by Councilman Canal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-two, as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section five five one point oh seven four A one, to deliberate about personnel matters, the City of Odessa may adjourn to executive session to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, city manager, candidates. As authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section five five one point oh seven two, deliberations about rental, real property, excuse me, real property. City Council may adjourn to executive session to deliberate the purchase, exchanges, lease, or value of real property if deliberations in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiation with a third person, a real property located within the city limits of the City of Odessa. Need a motion to go to executive council.
So move.
Motion by Councilman, first by Councilman Canal, second by Councilman Haney. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Gentlemen, we are now at executive session at six forty-nine PM, May, March twenty-first.
Remember that Snickers commercial?
Yeah.
You want to get away?
Yeah.
This has to be very...
Anybody turn that?
All right, Jim, I need the motion to come out of executive session.
Summon.
Motion by Councilman Stokers, our second. Seconded by Councilman Canal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're now back in open session. The time is 8:42 PM. No action was taken in executive session. Due on Agenda Item 23, is there a motion to adjourn?
Summon.
Motion by Councilman Mitchell, seconded by Councilman Stoker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We are adjourned.
Good night, thank you.
Good night.